We call this meeting an order and we stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Roll call please. Brocious here. Ister. Barnhart. Martina. The executive session held prior to tonight's council meeting to discuss personnel. Moving on, police update.
Yeah, so basically what I wanted to do is just kind of give a police update, what's going on in the police department. So you guys kind of have a heads up, but we haven't done it in a while. So what basically I was looking at, I went back to August, since August was the eighth of the report that was made. There were some things going on there in September. In, real quick, in August, the police department dispatched 707 police incidents. Through the date, since September 1st, the police have dispatched 473 calls so far. In the month of September, our tally is right now, basically, we have 219 closed cases. We have 1,200 investigation as well as three death investigations, two of which have been closed down. With those numbers being said, you know, the 707 calls in August that the police were dispatched to and the 473 here in September, they're really big. That's enormous for a case with them somewhere. As you see the numbers, you know, as we go into the later times, they start to come down. But just letting, you know, wanted to let everybody, you know, know basically of the amount of calls we are handling, what the department, the number of guys that we have, and, you know, what we have. Wanted to go over a little bit with the police response to calls. Guys are in growth, basically, getting out there. They're responding as fast as they can. Been really taxed lately in the police department. We are, we are doing our best that we can with handling calls. Wanted to talk a little bit about the Facebook page. We're working on that. Hoping to have that up and going and, you know, generating some dispersments of information as we go. And we're working together with them on that as well. I know they have a pretty good page for the city department. Spoke with the mayor about crime watch, starting for crime watch. Looking to start getting back into the crime watch and getting back into neighborhood watches and things like that as well. I spoke with the mayors, I was speaking with you about that as well as Julie, I know you're pretty active down in that way as well. Just wanted to make, just a little announcement on our license plate reader. We've just got a second license plate reader. What we're going to be doing is we're going to be hitting the streets. We hit part of town, half of Sunbury, and we came up with 56 violations. The license plate reader basically reads the license plate, lets us know if it's basically expired, suspended, also with inspection violations as well. We, again, hit 56 vehicles just in one part of an area. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to put, meter patrol is going to also assist with it. But as we can do it, we're going to start going after these vehicles that are two months out. The citation for, or the, actually, the ticket for the city. Every vehicle that, if you're out of inspection, it's a hundred dollars. If you're out of registration, it's a hundred dollars. So it's a way of going and trying to kind of clean up things a little bit with these vehicles that are on the street. So I'm going to start doing that with the officers as well. Also, I spoke with the mayor also about a citizen's report form, actually. Going to start looking at this. Bloomsburg had a really good citizen's feedback form for incident calls and service. So just to go over real quick, officer responding in a timely manner, do you agree, disagree, not applicable? These are the same kind of questions. Appearance of professional, officer courtesy and polite, officer steps to mitigate problems. How do you rate the overall quality of life in Sunbury? How do you rate the overall appearance of tow vehicles, police visibility, and such things? So basically also like what would you like to see in the foot patrol in the downtown area, bicycle patrol and things like that? Going to implement that and how that formula goes, and our guys threw out on call, they either hand that to somebody and I would help them come in and hand out per day. The other thing is I'm a supervisor myself, actually following up on calls. They hand this out and basically say, hey, can you fill this out, get this feedback, send it back to the police department, go from there. Different things like that we're going to do. Just kind of wanted to give a more of a formal of what's going on in the police department and the calls that we do handle and the different things that are going on in the police department at this time.
Travis, I got in contact with somebody from the crime watch from before. So you and the mayor, we did together, I can, it's already contacted.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to CDVG final public hearing. Jamie?
We're going to recess your regular meeting and all the order of public hearing. So this evening is the final public hearing for the CDVG program for 2023. The city has selected Sesquahanna Avenue Stormwater Sewer Separation Phase Two as their project. That's 261,278 hours to be allocated. And then admin is $50,000. Total allocation of $311,258. Are there any questions on project selection? Okay? So we have a couple resolutions to review as part of the public hearing. The first one is the city's resolution to apply for your FY '23 CDVG funds. Basically, a DCE form that says the city is interested in applying. They have the due authority to apply. They've undertaken their citizen participation. So they're with the requirements of the program. And that the mayor is authorized to prepare and sign the necessary forms, which he has listed tonight to sign. And that the city of Sunbury will repay if they do, if anything they do is deemed to help. Any questions on that resolution? The second resolution to be adopted in the regular meeting this evening is the 504 compliance officer resolution. Every year, the city is required to designate a city employee as a 504 officer and establish a grievance procedure for 504. Section 504 is your accessibility to city-owned buildings and city-run programs. This resolution this evening will be the city administrator as the city's 504 officer. And that the city has adopted a grievance procedure for any, you know, complaints regarding accessibility. Those complaints should go directly to the city administrator. The final resolution this evening is the annual fair housing resolution that speaks to the city's policy on non-discrimination in fair housing. And that, again, is an annual resolution that is required to be adopted by the city. Are there any public comments or questions on any of this? Hearing them? We'll adjourn the public hearing.
All right, there were, we convened, thank you, Jamie. All right, at this time, is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Any public comment on agenda items at this time? Yes, sir, on agenda items?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm at the end of the show.
All right, we'll get you then. Saving the best for last, right? All right, moving on to new business. Councilman Ister, insurance claims?
Yes, for the future, if there's a claim, make sure it's the Jeff, and the police report is the Jeff so we can finish the claim up easily. Now collecting, I think we got three checks in the last week or so. Some of them were nine months old, one over a year. Just need to be prepared soon as accident happens, get it to Jeff. Thank you.
Moving on, Mr. Backer, LSAT?
I'm sorry, just a quick one, things.
I was going to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do I have to back on those?
Oh, sorry. My bad, Jamie. I saw, I'm like, oh, we're good, sorry. So going backwards a little bit. Jamie, go ahead.
No, I just need approval of these three resolutions. Do you want to do one at a time? Just, you know, approval to adopt the resolution.
All right, I'll make the motion to adopt the first resolution to apply for the FFA 2023 CDVG. Do I have a second? Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Brocious. Yes. Ister.
Yes.
All right, second one to make the motion for the fair housing resolution. Do I have a second? Ister.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Brocious. Yes. And the final one, the 504 officer resolution. I made that a motion.
I see.
Martina. Brocious. Yes. Ister.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Did somebody walk away with my sign-in sheet by any chance?
Yeah, we have.
Okay, thank you. We were just, yeah, sorry.
Sorry about that, Jamie. All right, we already did tell someone nicer. Now we're moving on, Mr. Backer.
So in coordination with the departments, so DPW director, Martina, our councilwoman, and Steve Welker, we have decided that we should go for an LSAT grant for Walnut Street and Memorial Drive to re-precaving and some infrastructure within that roadway. It comes to $982,805. There is no match required for LSAT, so there would be nothing on us. So I'm just looking for an approval. We did talk about this a little while ago. About just looking for approval from councils to.
I don't have an issue with your answer, a quick question. So let's say we don't give all the money, we need to obviously do those two. Where are we picking to put the money and prioritize it when we have half the month?
We got to look at, we're going to do a draft.
Okay, I didn't know if you had like, all right, this is priority one, priority two, or vice versa. I just had an idea.
They're both high priority because I'm going to get both of them done.
Yes.
Really bad, and I want to get them done in front of the schools. We think by packaging them in the way that we're going to package this, I think this is normally, we wouldn't expect to get this much.
Yeah.
But with this, in these areas where we're at, I think we're going to have a good possibility of doing very well. If not, then we'll look back to restructuring, we have the supplementing selling of liquid fuels and possibly reducing the size of scope of the project.
Yeah.
I'm excited, I'm sorry.
Second.
Didn't know if you were finished.
No. Ister.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilman Martina.
I no longer need to do that. The gentleman's no longer.
All right, so no need to do that. All right, Councilman Barnhart, go ahead.
I'll leave the table the next month when you hire until the next council meeting.
All right, I'll second the motion to table. Ister.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Brocious. Yes. Keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
I make the motion to accept the MEC tech billing rates.
Second. Ister.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Brocious. Yes.
I make the motion for the waiver request for 1214 Lyons Street with Sopan Hospital. Make a motion to approve that waiver.
Second. Martina.
Yes.
Brocious. Yes. Ister.
What's the waiver for, I'm sorry. What location?
It's for the hospital. Go ahead.
It's for the two boating on the east side of the property in the rear. We're hypotrophic community, just like, there's two boating there, they're subdividing into two. In the subdivision ordinance, we have, there's some requests that they just can't possibly meet anywhere. So what makes this so old? Plus the waiver, one being a pre-application plan, the other one being a primary plan. They're doing everything file. And the other one is to correct the plans on regular paper with black tape rather than cloth.
Ister.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
All right, keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
I make the motion to approve the hard for 112114 Chestnut Street.
Second. Ister.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Brocious. Yes. All right, and then I'll do for vouchers and invoices. So make the motion to accept to pay the vouchers and invoices for the general fund of $328,158.17. $348.55 out of liquid fuels, private grants of $120,154.15, and payroll of $60,586.6. Do I have a second? Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Brocious. Yes. All right, moving on to discussion items here. AED for the police station. I know we just recently purchased some. I know we have one here now, City Hall, down at DPW, and also at the Rink. We do have $6,000 left over. I know we want to get one for the police station because always gets heavily traveled building by the, by the public, by other agencies that use that building. So we do have $6,000. I just wanted to speak to that. Does anyone have, bring up for council vote next time, you want that set aside? Anyone have an issue with that? Or have any questions on getting one for the police station?
Are we still working to getting the, the choking?
Yeah, that's also, that's also with that. Because they, I believe they got those also going through. Yes.
I just remember discussing, discussing a couple months ago, and I just started seeing things like.
I mean. You only put a number to it, you didn't put like.
I mean, I don't know if, if everyone's not.
I think you should go in order.
All right. The number that that dollar amount was owed.
All right, so we'll just go over that, similarly, the ones that we already got trained upon. So that training was today, correct?
Joe agrees. For the record.
For the record. All right, then moving on here to City Hall upgrades. Councilman Ister, did you hear from them yet?
He's supposed to call me back. He was out. He said, "When I get back, I'll give you a call."
He probably, he probably never came back. Probably enjoyed it out there.
I'll call the more, same time.
All right.
I'll call you in the, in the afternoon.
All right, appreciate that. That's all I had. Councilman Barnhart, you were up, sir.
I need just questions and comments. What I mean by that is, I'm not trying to trample on anybody's First Amendments. You can ask what you want. I'm not trying to trample on anybody's First, Second, Third, Fourth, Fifth Amendments either. Let me get that out of the way right away. It's just some people ask questions, ask the same question five different ways. You get an answer, you should satisfy that answer. And there is transparency. If you have a question that is so important, why wait until the council meeting? Make an appointment with the mayor, one of the council members, make an appointment and make your concerns known. Shouldn't wait till last minute because some of the questions are actually dogmatic and a little bit pontificating in a way. And it's almost like somebody's using ulterior motives to ask these questions. And you wait till a council meeting to ask them instead of coming into the city council, making an appointment, getting your questions answered. I love Sunbury. I'm sure all of us do. And I think we should be focused more on the positive than the negative. And also as a reminder, when you get up at the end, it does say public comment. It doesn't say public comment, question and answers. It says public comment unrecognized and not your name. And you are on a three-minute time limit. And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to start enforcing that three-minute time limit.
I do the best I can, Councilman Barnhart.
That's all I had on that.
All right, Councilman Martinez, Steve, Sesquahanna Avenue street cuts?
This is generally, we're just, we're going to be putting a lot of money in the Sesquahanna Avenue. One of the things that aggravates our streets the most are street cuts. What we're trying to do, well, it goes to the announcements. What we're trying to do is we're trying to, when we finish paving Sesquahanna next year, I am not permitting any elective cuts. Five years. So if you need gas up here, get it now. Because I'm not leaving, leaving the street, cut the street for non-emergency issues. That's done. So that's just the.
Steve just quoted, that's phase one.
That's phase one. But this is going to go, as council is aware, we've been working very diligently with council, with the administrator, getting our grants, getting to augment our liquid fuel funds. We have a very healthy amount of construction that's going to be coming up. Let's go with healthy, it's good actually. It's going to be a lot, so everybody needs to be prepared for that. So we have a lot of things coming. There's a lot, a lot, a lot of work's got into it. And we don't want to put all this work and time and effort into these streets and have them cut up and have them fall to pieces again. So that's just what, what that five-year moratorium is going to be.
So here's my question. Say, not disagreeing with what you're saying, but if someone sells their house, a new person comes in three years from now, oh, I want to convert to GAPS. How is that their fault when they didn't even live here?
They knew when they bought the house, house of that.
So now here's my question. Are we going to do that for every street that we pave moving here on out?
It depends on the depth of construction. If we're just going in and doing a mill and pave, I'm not structurally changing the street. But if I'm going in and we're putting in all new pipes, we're putting in all new infrastructure, the entire street's getting redone, that's the time to get your updates up.
Well, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just playing the other side of it here because you know there's going to be someone coming, well, I didn't live here, I just bought here, I just moved here. Why can't I convert? I didn't know about it.
Listen, we're also looking after several hundred municipalities around. What they do is they run a sliding scale and they say, listen, if you want to cut the street, if it's within one year, the permit fee's going to be $10,000. So sure, you can do it, you can cut the street, but you're going to pay to fix that street properly.
So now here's my next question. I know we spoke about it. What, because I know other municipalities, we spoke about it. If there's so many cuts within a block, they have to repave the whole street because you said they're the integrity of the street. Because you drive up, what is it, Fairmont Avenue, you look at that street, it's cut, 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 cut. It's like a washboard.
It's tons of the street.
So I mean, if we're going to do that with our streets, I think you got to also enforce it on these utility companies.
But this is what, this is what we're looking at, Josh.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing.
A complete rewrite of the entire street code that we're working on getting through and working on getting embedded. It takes a very long time to get that through. Once that's done, all these ideas, you know it well, thank you, when you work with my partner, that we've been working on this. And that is one of the theories that we possibly utilize. It puts undue strain upon the final company to come in then. So that's where I don't think that's fair, and that's where I think you might do a little something. We're looking for that, find that sweet spot, where it's not undue until the last person coming in to cut the street. But also, it preserves the streets for the taxpayer because these streets are extraordinarily expensive, okay? Extraordinarily expensive. What we get from the state for liquid fuels is miniscule. There's nothing there to do this. So we have to utilize those funds augmented by grants. That's what we've been working on for four and a half years, we're building these grants up. And we're getting there. We're getting a lot of progress. What is it, right now, we're around $10 million or so that we could be requiring the grant stores and stuff at this point, or $8 million?
Well, it's over $8 million, but it's not just streets, but over $8 million, but you know, a lot of that is streets.
Yeah, so I mean, we're working towards this, but just utilizing liquid fuels money just to want to pay the street. I can take yearly amount, I might pay two little streets. That's all that was about, was just that we're going to be putting in more and more in. Until the regular street code is completely a hundred percent replaced, I just want to protect the streets so that they're not getting destroyed.
Any questions? Sorry, question, just phase one.
Yes, this is Sesquahanna Phase One. This is from Reagan Street to Gay Street. And from, from Backer, from Sesquahanna to front. I'll add a cover.
Those individuals are receiving letters to make sure, owners and refusers, make sure that they all have, you know.
Questions, anyone? All right, moving on to announcements, probably the most important one tonight. It's a certain councilman's birthday. Councilman Barnhart, I'm not going to say his age, it was the same as his birthday, that's it, that's all I want to say.
What are you doing, John? 37.
Fire. Moving on, New Year's Eve celebration meeting, the first will be taking place tomorrow here at City Hall at 4:00 PM. If you're available, come and help. The flood training exercise will be held here, not held here, but held throughout the city on the 27th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. There will be multiple road closures. We're putting that up on our social media pages, so people are aware of it. Going to make announcements here tonight. As Steve just spoke about, the Sesquahanna Avenue gas relocation and the cuts. So he said, and I'm just going to summarize it here, how they're not possibly allowing cuts for five years. And phase one, they're sending out letters to the homeowners, property owners, renters, whoever may be. So if they're interested, make sure you contact the city. Parking restrictions will be taking place in early.
Parking restrictions will actually begin taking place.
As in tomorrow on Sesquahanna Avenue for the UGI, so that was that. Phase one, Sesquahanna reconstruction for the sidewalks. Oh, hold on here. Sewer storm line reconstruction is scheduled to commence in the spring of 2024 with obviously with the possible weather delays depending on all those things. The next budget meeting will be held here at City Hall on October 9th at 5:00 PM. The next city council meeting will be held on that same day, October 9th, at 6:15 PM. Now at this time, is there any public comment at?
Keep going, did start, correct? Well, what's starting right now is IBA, which is a subcontractor, 14th P now is starting to relocate the poles. That's already started. J.F. Carlyle will be the contractor for UGI. They're rolling in behind them. They'll be starting within the next two weeks, and they'll be starting putting in new gas lines. All that work should, the pole location relocation should take a few weeks. Gas line is going to take until the end of the year probably.
Okay. And, sorry, one more thing. We are estimated to launch our new website here at the end of the month, early October. So if you do have issues getting onto the new website, please contact us, know because obviously it works on our end. We may not, you know, it does not work on the public's end. So if there are issues, you found something, hey, this is old, or something needs to be updated, please reach out, let us know because like I said, or else we would have changed it. So now, is there a public comment at this time? Please state your name.
For your written grant. Mr. Mayor, are you timing me for three minutes?
Yes, I start.
Okay. So just to make sure.
You're about 10 seconds in, sorry.
That's fine. I'll talk fast. When local government leaders refuse to answer questions, they become their own worst enemy. Public comment is not intended to require the council and or staff to answer the impromptu questions as we were educated here tonight. Speakers will address all comments to the entire council as a whole, not one individual member. I recognize that it is not feasible to discuss and resolve all issues raised by speakers during the public comment period. Some policies request that speakers refrain from personal attacks. And authority to restrict what people can say during a public comment period is quite limited. The First Amendment protects even unpleasant and critical speech in a public forum. Few government actions are as corrosive to democracy as refusing to comment when citizens ask questions. A critical test for how well a public agency is performing is how it manages problems, mistakes, criticism, and crisis, and how it communicates about them with the public. This is expressly true when it involves three most basic and essential functions of local government, would be law enforcement, fire protection, and public safety services. The city manager and the city council officials have an ethical and professional responsibility to keep the citizens of Sunbury adequately informed of all municipal measures, incidents directly related to their key duties as city officials. Covering up certain matters only makes local officials in the city of Sunbury look bad, unless the city attorney is advising you to do so. The keep quiet approach is disastrous, not only because it undermines the essential roles of our public offices and institutions, but also because it just doesn't work. It evokes strong distrust and moral outrage. By behaving as adversaries, we create adversaries. Don't be afraid to work openly and collaboratively and diligently with the citizens to solve problems, especially when you're asking us two questions. One, tell us something positive about Sunbury. And two, what's something you would like to see changed? Now, I'm going to go back to two weeks ago. Am I okay, Mr. Mayor?
Forty seconds.
So forty seconds. So I'm going to go back to the last time when I asked the question and I didn't get an answer. So I'm going to ask the question as a whole. Do we have a code supervisor? No, moving on. Two, when I asked why Mr. Backer was doing walkarounds in the city, I wasn't answered that either. So here's the thing. You didn't make a jerk out of me, you really made a jerk out of yourself because Mr. Backer's in charge of light. That was a very simple question to give a citizen and say, Mr. Backer's in charge of the light department. There we go. That's all I have to say on my First Amendment right. Thank you, everybody.
Any other public comment? Please state your name, ma'am.
Yeah, Deborah, that's Sunbury. I just, Josh, I'm a little confused about the vouchers and the hard. What are the vouchers for?
What do you mean?
Like for the treasure thing?
That's like paying the bill, like.
Oh, okay, yes.
Like you said, they're, like the vouchers come in later or early, things like that. That's what that is.
And Josh, I just wanted to comment to you that I know that it would be nice if we could all come in during the day, but Josh, you worked during the day all day, don't you, until 3:00 or 3:30? So a lot of people can't come in because we all work. So that's what this public meeting is supposed to be, is for us to come and give you your, our concerns. It'd be nice if we could do it during the day, but if we can't meet up with somebody in the council, we shouldn't feel bad about coming in at night, coming here. And the other thing I wanted to ask about, Josh, is down on Front and Market, right where the church is, there's a tree that's like growing out, like a big bush. And I know it's our responsibility to do our own trees, but it is a church. Can somebody go in there and kind of like clean up those branches?
We're aware of it, we're in town.
Oh, okay, yeah. I didn't know. I mean, I'm not going to.
No, it's crazy to come off market.
Because it just comes into town and it just doesn't look good.
Yeah, I see it.
And actually walks your way of walking.
It'll take five minutes down there where the hand clipper and a couple guys will.
Great, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's already on schedule.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment at this time? Go ahead, sir, please state your name.
Uh, Robert Walter, I was here at the last meeting regarding a property in our neighborhood that's vacant for years. Um, I, my reason for coming at that time was to find out if it was on the ISO list or the nuisance list. And at that meeting, I was told that it's on the nuisance list, and I obtained a copy of the nuisance list, and it's not on any of those, I don't know why we were. My question is, I invite any of you to go by, the property is in the crest of Reagan Street, down main drag to the hospital. Uh, it, to me is an ISO, and my question is, what does it take to get a property either on the ISO list as opposed to the nuisance list?
So, I'm sorry, what was the question?
What does it take to get action on getting a property on either the ISO list or the nuisance list?
So, if you could correct me if I'm wrong, um, but I believe it's three founded, unrectified citations.
Yes.
Um, for a property within six months, six months, and then they can be on, put on the nuisance list. If they're on nuisance, they can be on, be put on the light, but they don't have to be a nuisance property to be put on the light, they're actually two separate lists. So, um, for the nuisance, once you're on that list, you have to come into the code office, um, and rectify those issues, and if there's, you know, numerous ones, um, come up with an action plan to correct those. Uh, once they are corrected, it is up to council to take them off the list before six months, if they did, and say they did it in a month, all that work. Council could take them off the list, um, if not, they can wait six months, as long as they don't have any future violations, they will be automatically taken off the list in six months, is that all correct?
That's correct. Why is this not on the list?
Where did you get the, did you get the list off of their website?
Yes.
So that list is not completely up to date to this point, I don't believe.
That's what's your list up to, what they, what did they?
Revised March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
We're trying to get them updated, your list, we're, we're, we're on, but that's, that's the most up to date.
We just meant, we just meant that it was just purchased, this property was just purchased again for the umpteenth time by a lady from Florida, and out of, should be an out of town landlord, which is great. And apparently she bought it sight unseen because she was appalled at the condition of the building when she walked through it. It's uninhabitable, there are windows facing my property that, that have fallen out and they haven't been replaced, so by this point, and. I just don't understand why, why this is just ignored, of why, why they, we have to maintain our properties and keep them up. Well, why is, why is this left? For years, this is here, please watch, done that.
You'll have to bring up with the code office, sadly, your time is up, so if you, if you.
You can make an appointment and come in, uh, I'm here in the evening, so I al, I also have a job when I work, so I'm, I'm here, I can make time any time of the evening.
Why would I have to make an appointment, isn't that your job to go around and look?
Well, I guess, I have to discuss with them, right, like, you have to discuss it with them, like, I'll.
Nine twenty-five Reagan Street.
I was up looked at, that's one corner.
Yes, corner of Reagan and Champ Avenue, you can't miss it.
All right, any other public comment at this time? Any other, oh, please state your name, ma'am.
Julie Roche's. Going back to the last meeting, when we were here. Uh, I just want to express that I was not trying to upset anyone with my question about events in the city. Um, but what you cannot deny is other communities are having events, they're cruising up their downtowns and other parts of the community. People see that, the people review these videos, and the question is, what's wrong with Sunbury? Why can't we do these other events? So, just wanted to express that to you. The other thing is, um, for these type of violations or whatever, are they being sent a letter, or are they gonna be tagged?
They'd be, they're actually, they'd be tagged on site.
Okay.
You know, it'd be, it's just like a parking ticket, so basically, it's a city ordinance violation, which comes very often, and you can, and go very long view.
What, what happens when the tag accidentally gets, oops?
Has it abandoned via?
Because that seems to happen with different violations. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, sir.
Anything happen, I know I have three minutes.
Go ahead, it's started.
I have a, one question, or maybe a couple. Is there anything gonna happen with the Sunbury Hospital? Is there any plans of like basing or buying it, uh?
That's not, and like I said, that's not a property, so we cannot speak about it, so like I said, that's, uh, it's owned by Drive, so if you, you'd have to contact.
No, I just didn't know if you knew the, the community, if we're gonna have a hospital there like we used to.
It'd be up to whatever Drive wants to put it, like, it's like, I don't want to speak for them, whether do or don't, but it's like I said, whatever they see.
And the building that he's talking about, I met the lady. I met her, she can't hardly speak English from the line. She, I think she didn't even know what she was even buying, because when her and her boyfriend, her husband, whoever he was, came out, out the door when I was pulling up in there, she was ecstatic, she had no idea what the inside of that building was like. You know, other, rather than all the rigmarole to go through and stuff, it just should be torn down. The money that would have to be put in that building to make it livable, you're talking probably a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. And who's gonna want to put that money into a shack? We got predators coming out of there, skunks, opossums, uh, there's squirrels that live upstairs, and I see below this edge of the building, they have a whole chewed out of wood, and they go in there. It's not worth, it's not worth monkeying with. I, I started dating my wife in two thousand five, okay? That building's been the same as what it's been since I lived in our house.
I've been there since nineteen eighty.
And, and something needs to be done with it, you know what I mean? Somebody needs to take the bull by the, or the bull by the horn and do something with it, you know? That could be a nice property for something, another house, you know, an ice cream shop, whatever. But every day I come out of the back door of my house, I gotta look at that S pool place, you know what I mean? And we're just, we're getting tired of it, we, we want something done with it.
Can you guys leave your contact information for me, because I have, um, there's a couple of questions I have for, of some other individuals, so I think I can take some of the answers that you may have, or. Um, if you could leave your emails or phone numbers, then I, so in fact, I can have that directed to my, communicate.
We're just, we're just want something done with it, it's been, it's been like this for years and years and years, and the windows, the windows are busted out, and, and the one window towards my place, it, the top window is completely down, it's been like that for about two, three months. The rain and all that stuff is going right inside there, and with winter time, that time.
It is.
All the winter time coming, and the snow is all gonna go in there too, so.
We're gonna.
It's just, you know, these have been torn down.
Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, sir.
Uh, Justin Strachan, representing the daily item, it's been about three weeks since the announcement was made that brown hair had become unavailable. Are you able to update the public?
We cannot comment on that topic right now, to your personal issues.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public, oh.
Ladies and gentlemen, I was passing out papers tonight, uh, concerning, uh, positive comments of what like you'd like to see changed in the city. If you have those filled out, please raise your hand all around and collect them, so all your comments can be collected and brought upon to the city council.
All right, any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment at this time? All right, adjourn this meeting, please.